Moving on. Continued public hearing on RGFA for 33 Saddle Hill Road. Before we start, may I just say that this afternoon at 3:30, we received an email of responses from the applicant's attorney to issues and questions outstanding on the application from the last meeting. I think the last meeting was in August.
September 10.
September. And then tonight, we've just handed material, I assume, on the same issues.
Yes.
We don't like to do this. We don't like to get eight pages of material the afternoon of the hearing because it doesn't give anyone a chance to review what you're saying. So, this is, you know, this is like the second time this has happened on this application, and I don't understand it. Our standard, and I think that people in the Land Use Department make this clear, that we like to get material from people, either the applicants or abutters, in time for us and our consultants to be able to look at and process the information that we're receiving. What do we do with this now? You know? This is, this is, this puts us in the same position we were in in September when we got a boatload of material at the last minute from the abutters. I'm tired personally of continuing hearings so that we can see, we can process information, and then the day of the hearing, getting more information that we now have to continue in order to process. And so, this is the last time, just let me finish. This is the last time this is going to happen. When, if we get, because we're going to have to continue to process this, we're not going to be able to finish this tonight. We have to continue. We're not going to do this again. We're not going to accept any information that comes in less than a week in advance of the hearing session. It's just not, I just, it's not going to happen. So...
Yes, if I may. My apologies if we have stepped over the line by getting you the information when we did. But when the information came on September 2, on the night of the hearing, I heard no objection from the board. Everything came flying in, and we were back on our heels.
That's not true. That is absolutely not true. We continued the hearing in order to be able to evaluate the information that we got. That's the reason we continued the hearing. What do you mean you didn't hear an objection? We said we were swamped with information, and it was something that we weren't prepared for, and we hoped it wouldn't happen again, and it happened again.
So, if I may, the materials you have are a summary of everything you've already heard before. We have our architects here. We have our landscape architects here. If you'd like to hear from them, we have, in the back of the memo, there's a series of bullet points which respond to the reports that you saw last time. It's easy to work through the bullet points, and Marcus and Chris can address them. Jay LaRoy had a personal issue and cannot be here tonight. But we have a summary of his bullet point responses to everything that you have from the last time. So, we can put the board in the picture. We can hear from the other side. And if you need to continue to ask more questions, that's obviously what you're going to do. But my apologies for the board.
I guarantee you, we're going to continue the hearing. You can, you can either go through your explanations tonight, or you can, or you can wait until the next hearing because we will continue because our consultants haven't had a chance to even look at this material.
With all due respect, we've conferred you with your consultants, and they've signed up on the project. So, there's really nothing more to say.
Well, have you all seen this eight-page document?
Seen it or read it.
When did you get it?
Six.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
There's nothing new in the documents.
That's what you say.
Yes. So, if I may, I'll confer with my client. And if you want to set us to come back for a different time, we'll set it to come back for a different time. You want to go forward tonight, we'll go forward tonight.
Well, I'll leave it up to you.
Yes.
If you want to make a presentation tonight, you can.
So, can you take a two-minute break?
You certainly can.
Okay, thank you very much.
I haven't seen them.
I haven't seen those.
I haven't seen those. When do they come?
After.
All right. I've just been told, excuse me, I've just been told that a series of emails came in from the abutters. It's 5:45.
It's your old record. There's nothing new. It's all more copies of your old record.
It seemed like a record had gotten lost because of the change from Betsy.
There's nothing new at all. There's no new document.
Don't do this anymore.
No, sir.
Don't send us material at the evening of the hearing.
It's not. It's your record. It's the existing record.
It's the existing record from last month, and it wasn't in a...
It's the existing record.
It wasn't in a list that Johnson sent, so it's...
There's no document, no order, no phrase, no nothing. It's the existing record.
It's the stuff that was there.
What is your, what is your decision?
We'll have to go forward.
All right. We'll allocate a half an hour for this, and then solicit some comments from the abutters in reaction to what you're saying. But I'd like to limit it to a total of 45 minutes. Who's doing the presentation?
I'll start, if I may. You may. The abutters in this matter, well, first of all, we're here, this application was filed in May 5, six months ago. There have been sessions in June, and July, and September already. The abutters have had ample time to make all their points and objections. Voluminous material's been submitted on every topic imaginable. The abutters have made lengthy presentations to the board. We're hopeful that we're sort of at the tail end of the process here. What we've done in the memo is we've responded to each of the reports that were filed by the abutters. And again, Marcus and Chris are here to answer questions tonight if we have them, and they can present briefly in response to those reports if you'd like to. But first, I want to make a couple of points. The first one being that the abutters' constant refrain per frame in this case has been that there are multiple zoning violations that are raised by this project, and the project has to be denied because of those violations. The law, however, is that site plan review is the regulation of the use. It's not a prohibition of the use. And denials are not allowed unless the problem is so intractable that there's no reasonable solution for it. And that's the language in the case law. And the zoning bylaw in Weston has the same standard in it. It says the planning board shall approve a submission that's submitted or with reasonable conditions which shall pertain to the standards and criteria set forth in subsection H unless the planning board finds that the imposition of reasonable conditions would not ensure that the proposed project would conform to the standards and criteria. So, it's far-fetched in this case to contend that there's no set of conditions whatsoever that would allow for the proposed 6702 square foot home on a 2.5 acre lot. The house is only 307 feet, square feet greater, than a home that would be permitted by right. So, to say that there are no conditions which could provide on this lot that for that additional 700 plus or minus square feet is really far-fetched. The parties can disagree about the nature and the extent of the conditions, but the real point is the board has the information at its disposal to make a decision. The planning board has, on numerous conditions, numerous prior occasions, put conditions on much larger projects, on much more difficult sites. This is not that difficult a case. The abutters' claim zoning violations is also sort of a nonsensical claim because site plan review criteria are subjective, they're not objective. The only objective criteria is, do you comply with the dimensional requirements of the zoning, of the zoning bylaw? And we meet all of those, and that evidence has been put in, and there's been no contest about that. The rest of the criteria are basically, to the extent feasible, to the maximum extent possible. Those are the criteria in the bylaw, and we provided you with information to make the case for each of those criteria. The second point I want to make is that there have been lots of changes that have been made to the project in response to public concerns. Initially, the Reddys, at great cost to themselves, invested in creating a beautiful home. And that home was 8,371, headed 8,371 RGFA. It occupied only 7.7% of the 2.5 acre lot. It was a beautiful house. But there were concerns about that house that were put out by the neighbors. It's not that we offered a horrible house in hopes of getting a less terrible house, as was stated last time by the abutters. Mr. Reddy wanted the house that he proposed, and he spent a lot of money to have Marcus design, and he listened to the comments that came in from the public and made substantial changes to the house. He reduced the RGFA by 20%, 20%, from 8,371 to 6,702. He reduced the height of the house by three and a half inches from 31 feet 6 inches to 31 feet 2.5 inches. And that's the total height, the general height. There are other statistics in the chart that's at the back of your document which shows numerous other heights that were, that were low at individual section by section of the house. We also reduced the two-story length of the home that was facing 77 Pinecroft by 39 feet 1 inch. 39 feet 1 inch from 60 feet 11 inches to 21 feet 10 inches. Mr. Reddy has been extremely responsive to the neighbors, particularly those on Pinecroft. Third is the Wetlands' appeal. On July 6, 2015, the Concomitatus issued the Order of Conditions and stated the off-site stream, the off-site stream was intermittent. The DEP, just recently, on October 21, affirmed the Order of the Order of Conditions and issued a superseding Order of Conditions finding the same thing, that the stream is intermittent, and that there is no riverfront, and that there is no 200-foot setback which falls on my client's property. That decision may or may not have been appealed today by the Riches. We've been told that they planned to do so. The parties have been unable to reach an accommodation between themselves privately. Now, the Riches have often stated to us through counsel a willingness to resolve the case, and that is true and that is fair. And they have also stated on the same occasion that there are going to be numerous appeals that are going to follow as we move forward. An appeal of the Order of Condition, of the superseding order, any decision by this board, any decision by the building inspector, and also an additional threat to sue us under 21477A that a single-family house is going to cause damage to the environment under an environmental protection statute. The Reddys' response has always been the same. It's always been the same. We've said, "We're willing to reach an agreement on this, but you need to tell us what you want to see. You need to give us some proposed permit conditions to look at and discuss with you." And as we sit here tonight, we still have not received those from any of the abutters. Tell us exactly what you want, but we don't know. All we have is threats and vague statements. Besides these broad statements, there's been a failure and refusal to provide us with the permit conditions that we've asked for so we can negotiate them. The Reddys have no meaningful proposal to respond to. Instead, my client has made all of the concessions, and the Riches and the abutters, none. The Riches have chosen to inundate the planning board with reports in the hope that my clients are going to walk away rather than face the delaying costs associated with the extended hearing process. The Reddys are not going to do that. They're hopeful that we're getting toward the tail end of the proceeding, and my apologies if these materials were submitted too late. If you'd like to hear from the specific responses to the earlier reports, from Chris, our landscape architect, and from Marcus, we could do that now.
Would you prefer to do that now or to wait until the continued hearing?
Why don't we go ahead right now then?
All right.
All right, Chris?
So, the first report is from Arborist, a plant healthcare consultant. And the report notes that the proposed construction will place trees on the rich property at risk. We've designed our project to minimize impacts on existing trees at 77 Pinecroft by maintaining a large buffer, approximately 40 feet of undisturbed existing vegetation between the proposed house and the north property line. Construction fencing will be installed along continuous limited work line areas beyond that fence will be no disturbed zone. There'll be a substantial buffer again to protect existing trees from slow compaction, mechanical injury, changes in grade trenching. In our engineering sense, we've also protected the rich properties from surface runoff, from erosion. Again, all of the existing trees outside by a limited work line are to remain. The second, our report was from Ashmar Associates, the landscape architect. And the report expresses concerns on the quantity of plants and the effectiveness of the screening. Again, as recommended in the planning board guidelines, we're preserving a substantial border of existing vegetation. That is going to really be the most important part of our screening and buffering between the proposed house and 77 Pinecroft. And we're also enhancing that protective border with additional evergreen trees and shrubs. The report also expressed concerns on the proposed species of our plantings. The planning board guidelines recommend natural plantings, including trees of differing calipers, understory, and ground cover. And our proposed plan includes a diverse palette of evergreen trees and shrubs of mixed heights and types. Norris spruce are located to receive midday and afternoon sun exposure. American holly trees, often found in native woodlands, are located in some of the more shaded areas. Our proposed shrub plantings provide a naturalized understory within existing proposed trees. The redendons that we're proposing prefer actual light shade. And while the inkberry shrubs do become leggy, as the landscape architect noted, they will grow in shade. Both species would provide evergreen screen and can grow up to 16 feet in height. As an alternative to the diverse palette of plants that we're proposing in our plan, the report recommended a hedge of non-nated green giant arboribides planted 8 foot on center. I think a strategy that's really not consistent with your guidelines, which emphasize natural buffers.
Is this part of what you have handed us?
Everything you're hearing is in the documents.
Is in the documents, okay. Good, so I can give that to our landscape consultant, and she can take a look at it?
She has it, yes.
Okay. Right. Anyone, who else?
I'm going to respond to the report that Keith Gross submitted to the planning board. There are basically seven bullet points that I'm going to go over that correspond to Keith Gross's items of contention. His first concern is about shadows. He says that the shadows that our project is casting are severe. Be it minimized to the extent feasible, shadows on adjacent properties, by minimizing the second floor, building massing, eliminating attic, and using flat roofs everywhere, there is no new shading on this site that is severe. And in the context of as-of-right construction that would allow a two and a half story along the setback line of their property as-of-right, the, this, our current design is of far less impact than a typical as-of-right project would be not going through this board review. He was concerned that we had not shared our electronic files of our, of our shadow study. All of the data required for them to, for their architect to conduct his own shadow study was made available. Planted dimension drawings and elevations, and topographical map, anything you need to put something together which they easily could have done on their own. We're not in the habit of supplying edited, capable electronic files to anybody. With regard to the house position, he wanted us to move the house even further away from, when we initially designed the house, it wasn't on the setback line. It was pretty far away, but we moved the house even further away when we made the house smaller. He wants us to move that. He said, he suggested that we move the house even seven feet closer to Saddle Hill Road. And, but as I said before, we moved the house as far away from their property as we could and maintained the integrity of a reasonable design. And also, to that point, we designed the house in terms of, we designed the house in this configuration and relationship to all the houses that surrounded, not just, not just 77 Pinecroft. And there was, there was a bit of protest initially from some of the other neighbors when we moved the house closer to Saddle Hill. They're concerned about the mechanical equipment. The mechanical equipment is going to be specified and located to conform to the bylaw. So, you know, it's going to be positioned where it needs to be, and it's going to be just quite as it needs to be. They're concerned that large areas of blast are going to provide, are going to create glare during the day from low sun angles and create an overly lit environment at night. I think that lifetime being inside a house is not something that is regulated or up for discussion. But furthermore, being sensitive to that, large areas of blast have been located in relation to the orientation and distance from neighbors. And we've taken advantage of site features such as surrounding forests. We don't have just buffers here. We have a forest that buffer on two sides of the house. Also taking advantage of topography and new planting were needed for additional screening. You know, our overall response to the proposed plan by Keith Gross was that it was useless and irrelevant because all it does, it doesn't address any architectural concern other than the Riches' desire for a small, single-story house next door.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus. Anyone else?
Jay LaRoy is not here this evening. He could not be here. Again, you have the summary of his responses in the document if you would like. There are peer reviewers here who've reviewed all of his work. My understanding is that he has signed up on the project as compliant with stormwater regulations and general engineering practices in Weston. He can speak for himself if you would ask him. So, I believe that we're good on the drainage engineering issues that were raised in the comments by Norris Environmental. And lastly, my client would like to say a couple words.
Respected Chair in the Planning Board, and those of you that gathered here, good evening. You have not heard me before because I was not in the country. I just returned back with my family in August to live here and to send my kids to school and to raise them here, but it has not been a very pleasant experience for us. My name is Jay Reddy. You can call me Jay, but my opponents have called me an intruder in the emails. And you should know that you have been harassed, bullied, and intimidated. My family and I bought this property to build a home for ourselves so that our kids could be raised here. Unfortunately, because of the incidents that were happening here, I had to pull my daughter out of Western High and send her 160 miles away to another state. The approval process has been very stressful for us and for my family. My neighbor said, "We never spoke to them." In fact, I did call them, and because of their abusive behavior, I could not continue. And in fact, after that, I did speak to other neighbors, and we did have a cordial discussion. And how come the Riches have a problem with us? The underlying intent of opposing this project is nothing to do with the project. They just want it to be denied. They do not want this house there. It's that simple. Due to my absence, my brother and my team of professionals have responded to all the queries the planning board had and the concerns that the neighbors have raised. In fact, my neighbors swear to it with F-words at the neighborhood meetings. There are weaknesses for that. And you have seen how they have conducted themselves in the last previous meetings here. It's all recorded. You can mute yourself again in case somebody has forgotten that. Believing that the queries were genuine, our consultant worked genuinely, diligently, providing alternative solutions. It is clear now that none of those solutions have any meaning to that because they were not genuine. They just do not want this project. Now we realize the core issue is not the project. It is the inner demons that they are fighting with among themselves. To highlight all this, the more troubling statements that were made by them. One of the opponents had challenged my brother. "We will see how you will build in this town." That's nobody but the Riches. My builder, Wayne, was sent a text. "The fight begins." It's all recorded. It's an electronic page. The highlight of an email that Rich has sent to me personally, it's a two-page email. It is here, and I have offered it to some of the neighbors, and they do not want any part of it. They want to read that email. They don't want to see it. But if anybody wants it, I will hand it over to you guys. You can contact me. To quote them, "The house design in Saddle Hill just was never meant to be together." Basically, they're telling me, "You throw the line, or it stays the consequences." Quote again, "Wonder how you will complete the project." Quote again, "We will watch you with hawk eyes." What a way to live. Quote again, "All my neighbors are like a family and are sharing the litigation costs," implying, "You give up, your wins are going up. We will win. You cannot win." Again, quote again, "Would you consider selling your property? Take the project where it belongs and make it a showpiece where your neighbors will appreciate it." And again, I'm offering to send this email to the neighbors who want to read it and who want to keep it. The last communication from the opponent's learned attorney is that, "Do X, Y, Z for us, and we will not oppose the project, or it's face the consequences." It has nothing been but just threats, and it's been a continuing threat. And me and my family are just tired. Tired. Please don't continue. You can decide whatever you want to decide. You have heard whatever we can give you, and I think you have all the data that you need in front of you. It is just one abuter. The Riches are just driving this whole opposition. They are manipulating the neighbors, and neighbors are not really in the know what is happening. Let me tell my abutters, "Rainbow is beautiful, and your actions have all undertrons. It's a very slippery slope, and let's not go there. Avoid those grave consequences that will fall. My rights have been violated, and you're continuing to violate them. And don't quote Martin Luther King because that's blasphemy. It's been a nightmare to continue fighting with you guys on this project. And my wife and I request the planning board to oppose this project because we are committed to completing this. Do not discriminate this project. Treat it like any other project and apply the same rules like any other project. And to my neighbors, enough is enough. Stop it. Let your logic guide you, not your emotions. And do not bully us. Let us lead our own lives." And I hope the message is very clear to you guys. Do not encourage bigotry.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Is there anything that the neighbors would like to say at this point?
All right.
I do. The whole race thing is so out of bounds. I am so offended. I live on 44 Saddle Hill Road. I'm an immigrant. English is my second language. And throwing that out there is so ridiculous that that's all that's been said. Never has come up, and there's never been an F-word dropped. And so, that's it. I'm not, I'm not English. That's what they actually... That's it. Right?
I would actually prefer that you not talk to each other if you can help that. You know, it's obvious that emotions are running high. I'd rather not have it be a discussion based on emotional issues, but above all, please talk to the to the board and then we'll moderate. You had your hand up?
Yeah, just for one second. My name is Marcus. I'm at sixty-nine Pine Crop. I've been in this country for one year. I'm a neighbor of the riches. My personal experiences cannot be better. So, I mean, I was very surprised by the remarks that we heard since I've been describing two different sets of people. I cannot be more surprised by that.
All right. You said you wanted us to make a comment?
I hesitate too, so I'm going to keep it very simple. Just to confirm, we have only what's already on the record. There were second copies sent this afternoon because respectfully, there may have been some staff changes and some documents were unclear as to whether they're on your record because they weren't on a link when we asked for it. And so there are other copies came today. There's nothing new already on your record. Substantially, only thing we have asked you all to focus on is the bylaw. Same applies to everybody. Shadowing is four hundred percent increase. That is hardly minor. And safety is the trees. Respectfully to Kim and the other specialist, the reports are all there. And they all say that trees are dangerous. They can fall and hurt people as well as resources. So that's it for us. You have all you need from me. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? What I'd like to do, I'd like to bring this to a close, one way or the other. And John, we have on the eighteenth at eight fifteen, a discussion on the circular driveway at Green Lane.
Yes.
I mean, the board's already made a determination on that, but what I would do what I would do is push that off to December second. It's been a year anyway, so another week won't matter. Put this on for eight fifteen on the eighteenth so that you're not waiting forever for us to make a decision. That gives us a chance to look at this material, make a final review. I think we've we've seen every conceivable piece of information that anyone could possibly imagine submitting to us. But if there's if there's any more information people want to submit, submit it no later than a week in advance of the eighteenth or we won't accept it. It's it's that simple. And then on the eighteenth, we'll have a discussion and we'll make a determination.
Actually, it'll have to be submitted on Tuesday, the tenth, because the eleventh is holiday.
All right.
Okay? So any information has to come in by?
November tenth.
New information.
Sure. Marcus, could you give us a one pager on your shadowing study?
Yep.
Because I just heard four hundred from her and I thought I heard ten percent from you. So if you could give me, be as detailed in the engineering explanation as you wish because I understand that's not.
We will also give you a review of how it's written.
Because I'm interested in versus the shadowing of today, how much shadowing is added by the structure?
Yep.
What percent is that?
Yeah.
I don't know how we reconcile that. That discrepancy.
Through you, sir, if I may. The question I hope you pose is the volume of increased shadow as well as the number of hours per day? Because in putting up a new structure, it blocks light that used to have, used to be able to get through. And then there's the volume about where.
The percentage I'm interested in is what's the area times the duration, right, across the whole year? Pretty straightforward. Exactly.
Sorry, Jim.
It's my.
I would like to point out that the existing house's shadow is largely theoretical. It's much further west and south and we can barely see the house. And so by the time it's casting significant shadow, it's somewhat irrelevant, whereas the new structure being much further to the northeast is directly due south of us where we see open sky and it's, our architect said it was four hundred percent larger than the current shadow, but it's also majorly impacting our yard and our house, whereas the existing shadow is largely, you know, off in the distance among trees. So it's, Marcus's study says, oh, there's an extra hour and fif- only, I mean, only an extra hour and fifteen minutes of shadow per day. I would call it almost all of the shadow per day is significant versus only a little of the shadow of the existing house being submitted.
I just want to add, I'm not disputing anything. I'm just making an observation that there are two components to the shadow. One is, is there a shadow on their property and how long does that shadow exist? The other component that's even more important is how big is that shadow and where is it? And those two are closely related to each other and they're best expressed by simply looking at the shadow studies that we've clearly illustrated and all the data is there. It just takes the time to look at it. But we will give you a review.
One pager left.
I promise not to submit anything new in writing. I promise no additional reports. I would put out all of this. Please read the shadow in conjunction with the tree study. The increased shadow is a serious risk for the trees on the place where the new shadow goes, not just a question of pleasure for their home and their yard. And that's in the existing pine crop.
All right. One quick question for John. Do we need to bring boards anywhere? Or do you have everything you need on the?
I have everything you've submitted.
Right. More information we don't need.
Okay. I just don't want to fluff on you.
All right, so we will see you all at eight fifteen.
Yeah, sorry. Just one more thing. Stephen made the suggestion last time that extra boards might give an impression of whether or not blasting was going to be necessary.
Let me have Wayne answer that question because he spoke with our engineer yesterday on that.
The only area that hasn't had any testing is where the garage is going and the garage is only going down four feet. The septic tank is actually being moved for the new foundation and that area is all been tested. And with the existing houses now, you have a eight-foot foundation in now, so if we do hit, it will be very limited amount.
I was going to point out that the four-foot excavation is only for the footing. It's going to be a slant, right?
Through you, sir. Is that coming in writing?
Pardon?
Will that information go to you in writing? Because I didn't understand how, why it was relevant where the existing house was or put in a different place.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'm asking, sir, if he could provide that information in writing so it's on the record where they're telling you where they're not going to be blasting.
We're not signing them.
Plans are the plans. Yeah, I think what I heard them say, Jamie, is that they are, the place that they haven't looked for a ledge is where the garage is. And then they're just talking, I think you said, you're talking about just a four-foot foundation, no basement. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
No, just the garage area. You just have.
That's what I said, just in the garage area. That's what I thought I heard you say. Do you want, do you want that in writing?
What I heard was they'll only be limited blasting because we know where there's going to be blasting, where they're where we've tested. And the existing house they know about, but that's not relevant because they're not building there. And they're limited for the garage, fine. But where's the rest? That's what affects not the quality of life, it's the safety of the trees falling over. So I'd like to know what they're saying.
There was test holes done in those areas for the septics and we hit no ledge.
Septics over there. Yeah, the septics over to the other side.
Will you do a septic design? You don't just dig where the septic is?
I'm not the expert. I'm asking what we give to you.
We'll get you all the time.
That's all.
All right. Okay, so you're looking for where they put the, where they dug the test holes?
Preferably, where are they going to potentially need blasting? Tell you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Yes.
So I just wanted to say that it's only been our intention to have a house built that complies with the bylaws. I'm also the child of immigrant grandparents. I would never even in my wildest dreams consider discriminating against anyone for anything. I'm sorry that the Reddy family felt it necessary to move their daughter. I don't really know what they're talking about, but anyone is welcome to move into Weston and build a house that complies with the bylaws and doesn't put other people in danger or violate the bylaws, which are written to be followed. That's all we've ever asked from the beginning.
Right.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that our decision has to be based on the standards and criteria in the bylaws. That's what you're, that's what you were referring to.
Yes, of course.
All right. Any other comments? We'll see you on your eighth. Do it again.